One, two, three, four.
Yeah. Attention. Didn't we watch that? Enjoyed it because I'm a couple of months ago.
That's just the.
So this is the problem. It's the same.
Yeah, nothing, nothing. Sorry, the ballot won't change. It's on some.
I remember you went through a whole. Point.
Uh, no, not. We usually just, we usually just agree to that. You got that time for all the stuff to do.
I see it sounded very sound. Remembering it from last year. Or maybe, maybe actually we're not picking up the audit. Oh, yeah. Be honest with you. Like, didn't you just go through like some sort of?
Yeah.
Yeah, numbers presentation and I'm thinking about the audit.
Yeah.
Can everybody at home, can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us? Thank you. Okay, it is seven o'clock and I call this board meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller Beach is not present. All other board members are present.
All right, very good. So we still have a forum. All right, next on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And before we do that, is there any new business to bring before the, before the agenda, before the, the board? If there is no new business, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved, Miss O'Neal. I have a motion from Ms. O'Neal.
Second, Mr. Ravenhorse.
Second by Mr. Ravenhorse. We'll do roll call vote. Mr. Emmanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Michael.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh.
Aye.
Ms. O'Neal.
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorse.
Aye.
Aye for myself. That motion carries six zero. All right. Next on the agenda is the recognition of Tim Bestor for acquiring the ship grant. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Bestor and Ms. Joanne Judge Dietz. She is with us from the ship grant. And so they can talk about the project and how the money was acquired and what it's been used for. So we'll start off with Joanne and Tim.
All right. Well, I guess we're here to talk about the ship grant that we received from Homestead County Health Department and Joanne Judge Dietz. And Joanne, do you want to talk just a little bit about the, the grant?
Sure. Well, it's statewide health and program partnership is funded by the state legislature. It's dollars that come through public health and each county. Pity to the community for um, healthy initiatives that will help improve our future. So we look at things that will help increase physical activity or nutrition or reduce small. Because those are the things that add to chronic diseases. So we have funding that goes out to schools. For projects that can be sustainable. So we were looking for projects at the end of our grant cycle this year, which was beginning of school. And we really wanted to focus this year on physical activity, getting kids outside in COVID safe ways. So if we could provide funding to get kids in a program that was outside or additional shared, additional equipment so that they would not have to share equipment. Or to start programs where it could be six feet away from each other. So many sports were sharing the same equipment or were right next to each other. So we were looking for projects like that. So sent out an email to all of the schools to see if there were, if there was interest in starting a new project. And first of all, sometimes my emails, I think, go into a black hole. So I was really thankful that this was passed that line to Mr. Bestor. I worked with him a lot of programs in the past. We've done some funding for the bike program and for some staff development for the PE teachers because of just getting up on the new date standards. And Tim's been a really good partner in the past. I know he's a really good. He takes good care of the equipment and he, I would say, is a good steward of any funds. And so we had a really short turnaround. I sent it out and Tim had a shovel ready project that he was excited to have funds to start. And so we had thousand dollar grants available for schools. Tim's project was, was so organized, it was so ready to go. He had his application done in a couple of days. And so Stewartville got twenty six hundred dollars instead of a thousand dollars because he, he was just really on the ball. So I am happy to say that Tim's been a great, a great partner. So Tim, do you want to talk about the actual project?
Well, I gotta finish up blushing, you know, but I guess it goes well with the green tree behind me. And we read after you saying all those things. Joanne's just been a fantastic person to work with. You know, there's people that you can, you can look back on in life and just go, man, she was awesome. And that's Joanne. You know, when we needed, or she, she presented this opportunity for the bicycle program. And I think most of you've had kids go through that program. And it's like miniature driver, driver's ed. Joanne got us over fifteen thousand dollars for that program, for bicycles, for trailer, for training. She sent us to training. She got us equipment to repair the bicycles with. She got us curriculum. I mean, it was incredible. She's gotten us, just this week, she sent me something from my PE classes from, that was a link with the Minnesota United and COVID training opportunities that they could do in their living room. It's just been, it's been just a great partnership working with her. Yeah, like she said, we've done curriculum training for PE also through her. So it's just been awesome. You know, the, the people that worked on it, Josh Lake, Scott Chupke, they got out there, got this thing in the ground. If you've been out there, you can see we've got a nine hole course set up that's on the grounds. I walked it with Tim Malone and we've been out there laying out the court, make course, making sure it was working. One of the kids in school, Scott Bowman, super excited about it. He's uh, works with UDIS dot com, an online program. They've got our course online for a short course, a long course. Kids are out there playing it every day. Now, today was the first day I didn't see people out there, but it's seventeen. So that might have been a little tough, but otherwise kids have been out there playing it all the time. I think it's just gonna be a fantastic feature for the community for years to come. So I was just super excited, you know, with Joanne getting all this to me and, and making me look good. But it's really everybody around me that makes me look good. At least that's what my wife tells me. She. So anyway, I really appreciate it. Any questions about it at all that anyone has?
Tim, I want to acknowledge, the board will be accepting this donation tonight under their donation resolution. But you were the visionary here. So I want to give you the credit for getting this in place. And as you said, it will be here for generations to come. And we're really appreciative of the, the idea that you had and all of the foundation you put into getting it to happen. So thank you very much, Mr. Bestor. Kudos to you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Bestor.
Tim, is there any plans for putting in yardage markers and hole markers? I figured going up there, you haven't, so temporarily there's, they keep it on. The future, if there's any plans for that, if there's a wonderful addition to the school, I really appreciate that you put into it. But it's curious if, let's say the next step, if you will. Yeah, so my next step actually is to try to figure out with either Ms. Gruntier, Ms. Selfers, how I can get community businesses to potentially buy into sponsoring a hole and putting a sign up on each hole that has where the short T is and where the long T is, the distance, the picture of it. You know, I know we've had kids graduate in the past. I want to say Greg, Greg Reeves and his dad, they make signs. Um, you know, I always like to keep everything local possible as far as doing business. But I wonder if I could get businesses to buy into a sign that we can put up in each hole. Right now, you're right, I have things painted on the ground. And we've already talked with Josh Light as far as getting some pads in. You know, one of the things when designing a course was that you want to use as much pre-existing blacktop or, or concrete that you have. So you have to put in fewer throwing pads because as the people start using it, you'll start to wear down the throwing pad areas and it'll become muddy. So we've got plans for that coming up in the future. And you know, that was another thing I wanted to say was, you know, burn construction got right down there, put some holes in the ground. Or I'm sorry, poured the concrete after Horston Farms got down there, put some holes in the farm. So, you know, we've had a lot of, of great cooperation, but I'm not sure the step as far as maybe I gotta talk to Mr. Malone about getting some community, possibly sponsorship on some signage. That's a great idea. I think that's a really good idea. We might have to put a ladder going up on the roof of the school for people like me. They aren't very good because I've played around a few schools and that's always been my Achilles heel. Yeah, it's, I'll tell you what, Scott Bowman, once I set up the kind of family friendly or PE friendly course, then he got out there and he was, Mr. Bestor, I, I got a long course for you. I can show you where we can put the Ts. And so I went out with him one Sunday and we went through and walked it and painted it. So we had some, a really hard, challenging course for a long course for Truman. So one thing I might have to say that we have to put up is on hole one, after I played it this last week. Now, it is a family friendly, dog friendly activity apparently. And there are some landmines now all over the course that I don't think will go over well with the frisbee throwers. So we may have to put up or have the city somehow get a bag up there or a sign or something that says, hey, if you have pets in town, you bring them on the course, you know, you may have to clean up after yourself.
Yeah.
That's a good point. But otherwise, yeah, I think Tim Malone or whoever I need to talk to about signage and seeing what the steps are to get something like that in place.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Bestor, for your work. We really appreciate it. Thanks for joining us, Joanne. We appreciate that you took the time.
Thank you so much. Bye bye.
Yes. All right. Next on the agenda is the recognition of Patty Nelson for acquiring the People's Energy Cooperative Operations Roundup Grant. So this is a project that Patty has done for many years and she continually is successful in getting the roundup grant. I just wanted to recognize her for her efforts to give our students excellent opportunities for doing some STEM education in her classroom. And so Patty, do you want to talk a little bit about what the project is and how you'll be using the money?
You bet. Thanks. And thanks to People's Energy because they do continually keep supporting the things that we do. Some of you have made, remembered a few years ago, it's probably been three to five years. I presented because the district had offered an innovative grant. And part of that grant allowed us to get something called the pin boxes. And basically, and it just kind of ran out. And I was thinking of everything our children get to do this year. We don't get the canoe mobile. We don't get the field trips. Don't have the Mayo Clinic neuroscientists come in. The kids don't even really get to, their friends all day if they're not in the same class. And at that same time, on my email, it popped up from the pin box people. It had said that there was a line on there with the video. It said, just on this video, and I can't figure out where it is, but it sure shows off the epicness. The pin box, three thousand things for the classroom. And I was like, that's us. That's Bear Cave. That's our students. Somehow they found that video and it was pointing out to everybody. And I was like, you know what? We can maybe make this happen again. We don't have the canoe mobile, which People's Energy usually fun. Let's just give it a whirl, put it out there and see what they'll do. And enough, we just need to be able to get every kid on the lower fifth grade their own pin box, which that's always at the end, a tough one of who gets to take it home when six kids are working on it. So it really kind of is a neat thing. And the neat thing about the pin box is it is so innovative that we can tie a ton of standards into it. We tie in the simple machine standards, science. We tie in electrical circuits. We tie in biomes and food chains and Minnesota habitat. And then sometimes we play off the social studies aspect and do the historical thing. And the great thing is the kids are so engaged in it. Like, when you see the video, and that's what I had told, the creators always contact us and they meet with us. We Skyped in the past. I'm sure we will Google meet. They have volunteered again and they go through the whole reason and the why behind our company and our kids ask them questions. I think the last time we spent almost two hours with them. So it's really a neat thing that we do. But you can't even on the video go tell any of the special needs students from the regular students. And whenever we do the project, I feel like the most ineffective teacher because alls I do is walk around and there is nothing for me to do because the kids are so engaged. And I feel like I'm more interrupting their learning by trying to ask them a question just to get some interaction. But it's just really a neat project. And we kind of decided, would it be something we want to send home for distance learning? And we're hoping that we will be back as planned. And we thought it would just be a super fun activity to kind of ignite when we get in that winter mull. So we're kind of saving it for them. So thanks to People's Energy and we're looking forward to some super fun pin boxes.
Patty, do you want to explain how much you were able to get from People's Co-op?
They gave us three thousand dollars. And so basically, that's what they cost. And then, of course, the shipping costs came and they wanted two hundred dollars. And I worked with the company and they said, we'll throw in the shipping. We're more than happy to do that, to meet with you guys, to do what we can. So it's just a really neat program.
Congratulations to you, Patty, and thank you for doing this. It's really an awesome opportunity for our kids. We appreciate all of the hard work you put into getting this done.
Super, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Tim Bestor and Patty Nelson for going above and beyond for the grants, taking the extra time to put the plans together, getting organized and going out and pursuing the grants. So thank you for making those opportunities available for students. Okay, next we'll introduce Mr. Malone, who will introduce our AAA award winners. Mr. Malone?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yep.
I certainly would like to thank Mrs. Selfers and the board for having me. The, the couple of things that I get to introduce tonight would further show that, that I have the best job in the world. For seven years, I've got to work with a committee of people in the building and in this school. And one of the recognitions that we get to give out every year is for the Minnesota AAA Award. You might remember that the AAA stands for academics, athletics, and activities. And I can tell you that this year's winners, as much as any have, both represent themselves, their families, our community, as well as anybody has. They also, I would like to point out, represent their class very well. And the reason that I say that is because we had some very, very, very strong applicants again this year, just like we have in the past. So among the best in their class at a lot of different things that they do, both of these kids could not have a higher GPA. Both of these kids are among the best when it comes to the activities portion. And the, the words that Mrs. Hanzi would speak of both of these people in her, her band and in their marching band. And then the best of the best, Will is missing a little bit of his basketball season right now. Maggie missed an opportunity last spring to, to throw at the state level. But amongst the best of the best, I am proud on behalf of the committee that I have put together to introduce Will Cheddar and Maggie Beach as our AAA award winners this year. I certainly hope that there might be a mom or a dad standing over to your right or your left shoulder and maybe listening in a little bit here. But to the board and to Mrs. Selfers, these two represent some very, very fine student athletes in the senior class.
We'd like to hear from Wendy and Will. So if they want to chime in and share with us what they're involved in and the kinds of courses that they're taking and maybe even if they know what their plans are for after graduation.
Um, yeah, I can go first. My name is Will Cheddar. Thank you, Mr. Malone, for the introduction. So some of the activities that I'm involved in are athletics wise, I play football, basketball, as Mr. Malone mentioned. And I also participate in track and field. And kind of like more of like the arts portion. I am in band and marching band, kind of they coexist. And then some of the courses that I'm taking academically this year, I'm taking college calculus, college English, physics, speech, a band, and I'm taking economics. And that's just for this semester. Yeah, I have, I have a lot of fun, especially in school. All of our teachers are, you know, great people. They really help inspire everyone to learn. I would kind of like, as Mr. Malone said, like our class is super fun to, you know, like work with, learn from other people. So I really enjoy that. And also I'm like, whether it's the court or the field or like the biscuits ring or anything like that. I also like just being able to be around such great coaches and like educators. It's really great.
And Will, your plans for next year?
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna attend the University of Michigan next year. And I plan on studying environmental engineering as well as playing basketball.
Wow, very good. Thank you, Will. Congratulations. And Maggie?
Hi, I'm Maggie. For sports, I participated in cheerleading this year for the first time. It was super fun, best experience ever, best decision ever. Um, I also participate in track and field, just like Will, we're both brothers. And then I also on the side, like independently, I participate in powerlifting. And then for activities, just like Will, I'm also in the band and marching band. And then for athletic, oh, no, I said that already. And then for academics, I, I'm in band, college calculus, college sociology, college psychology, college statistics, college English, I don't know what else, Spanish four. And yeah, that's pretty much it for me. Oh, and then next year I plan on attending a public university to study computer science.
Congratulations to the both of you. We're so proud to have you representing Stewartville and best of luck to you in the next level of this competition. Are there any other board members that want to chime in? Anyone else?
Congratulations, both of you. It's pretty amazing what you guys have done over the years. So well done.
Awesome. I, but we're very proud of you. One of the things that amazes me is juggling the academics with the, the athletics. And, you know, sometimes there's a job thrown in there or, you know, there's family and siblings and, you know, other fun dynamics. So, um, you know, a great job and we're very proud of you and good luck in the future. And thank you for, for making us proud. Okay, Mr. Malone will have me introduce our coach of the year for Southeast Minnesota District.
So if I could just finalize to the board and Ms. Selfers that are on the AAA Award, we already have had Mr. Gobrinsen in and we've taken the formal pictures of Will and Maggie that will be displayed in the front entrance of our school for the next year here. And just a little bit of a timeline, both of these kids first learned of the application in early November. And then my deadline is December first to turn that over to the region. And so both, of course, they met their criteria and I've met my deadline in, in turning them both over to the region. And like Ms. Selfers said, we certainly wish both, all at the next level. To the board and then to Mrs. Selfers, I would like to apologize, I'm number nine. It doesn't really represent, and this is a hundred percent my fault, the Southeast Minnesota District Coach of the Year. Southeast Minnesota District would refer to the district that we are in for football. Had Mr. Malone proofread the agenda, I could have fixed the fact that Morgan is actually the Region 1A Coach of the Year. So for all of you that can hear me, all of you that would be willing to accept my apology, it's a little bit different because the Southeast Minnesota District would refer to football. So to all of you, I would like to apologize, just like the two kids that we got done talking about, Morgan is also very shy, maybe in accepting any kind of accolades at all. I happened to be walking through the hallway when Morgan was cornered by somebody else talking about this. Heard coaches, all of the coaches that we've been one A would vote for a Coach of the Year. And a lot of times that actually gets voted on and then released within the coaches association. And so I think Morgan kept their athletic director in the dark on this for about a month before I knew that it had happened. And I had Tom, Mrs. Selfers, I recently couldn't let this stay under the rug. So Morgan has been here for seven years. I'm lucky enough to say that I started the same year that Morgan started, seven years ago. And she has done a fantastic job with our girls soccer program. And she really has pointed in the right direction to that program. So from the bottom of my heart, I would like to be one of the first to acknowledge and recognize Morgan as the Region 1A Coach of the Year for girls soccer.
Congratulations, Morgan. We'd like to hear from you, just a few words, if you would mind.
Sure. Yeah, like Tim said, I tried to avoid any sort of recognition because in my heart of heart, I'm the coach, but the girls are on the field and they're the ones doing the work. I just helped them along the way. So for the past seven years, that's what I've been doing. I started off with a girls program where winning wasn't really in the picture. A lot of the girls came in and they sometimes had jeans on for practice and I didn't know what was going on. Being a former college soccer coach, I was like, what? So we had to change a few things around the first few years. And I think the biggest thing in the past three to four is the buy-in from the girls. And that all goes back to them. I can only take a little part of that because like I said, I'm the one who's on the sidelines cheering them on, coaching them on, while they're the ones who are. while they're the ones who are orchestrating everything on the field. So I give a lot of this to the girls, a lot of this to parents who also have spent countless hours taking the girls to and from different soccer games or playing indoorly, which I didn't even orchestrate that. I was like, go, girls, go. I'll support anything you do. A lot of it goes to them, of course, to Malone for supporting and letting me kind of do what I need to do with the girls' program and letting it grow into what it is today.
Well, thank you, Coach Bailey. We appreciate all of the hard work and time that you invest into this program. It has definitely filled the tiger pride. You've completely rebranded Stuartville Soccer for the Girls, and we really, really appreciate all of the hard work and effort that you've put into it. So congratulations to you. We're very proud to have you represent us.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you. And now Chair Warren, we move on to recognition of Mr. Michael, I believe.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the recognition of Dean Michael for his years of service as Board Member of the Stuartville Public School Board. So this is Mr. Michael's last board meeting as a school board member. And Mr. Michael, we wanted to recognize you as 13 years of service. One of the extraordinary things about you is you have held just about every position and have been on several different committees. And in getting to know you over the last three years, the wealth of knowledge that you have, the amount of pride you have, the dedication, compassion, and doing what's right and keeping the all decisions for what's best for the students is extraordinary. And that rings true through anyone that I had spoken to about you. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the years of service that you have been able to contribute to Stuartville.
Mr. Michael, did you want to share any words with us?
Took me a second to turn off my Bebeto, thank you very much. I appreciate those kind words. I guess I'm gonna owe her more than just that small donation I gave her the other day at her house. I'm gonna have to pay her big time. Now, I do have a secret to tell you folks, and that is about four and a half years ago, Dave Thompson called me because I had an opening on the board and he needed somebody to fill in a position for a short amount of time, but he wanted somebody who would run again. I really didn't want to do that, but he promised me that I would be able to hand out hand my youngest daughter, Maya, her diploma when she walked across the stage, when she graduated. And with that, it lured me into doing this. The only thing is, neither one of us did the math. Now I'm gonna have to chew him out a little bit when I call him and remind him that he's about six months short because obligation. So anyway, that's what sort of lured me into it. Truthfully, I've been very blessed to serve with some great boards and some great board members, including the folks that are here tonight. I very much appreciate all the service that each of you gives to our community and to our school district. And lastly, I guess I'd just like to say a real special thanking to the parents, especially those with those young children these days during the COVID days. You know, I only have a senior in high school, so I really don't get affected by the COVID as much as these young parents who have, you know, kids at home while they're, you know, they're probably having, the parents are probably having to work at home and also serve as part-time teacher. You know, I've spoken to a number of parents lately and, you know, I don't think that I could do it. I don't know. That kind of commitment and that they have to show right now, that is, they are really going above and beyond something that I, you know, my family, we ever had to deal with. So I guess I'd just like to say a special thanking to those parents who are who are every day dealing with this COVID crisis and, you know, thank them for everything that they do for our team and keeping our kids in school and learning every day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michael, for your years of service. There is going to be a gift at some point that will be presented to you in recognition of your years of service to Stuartville Public Schools. So, thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda items. So we have 11A through 11C. Is there any one item that a board member would like to take off and discuss separately? Okay, if not, I would seek a motion for Consent Agenda 11A through C.
So move, Mr.?
I have a motion by Mr. Emanuel.
I'll second, Ms. O'Neill.
I have a second by Ms. O'Neill. Any discussion? Okay. I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorst?
Aye.
Aye for myself. That motion carries 6-0. All right. Next on the agenda is Consider and Approve the Resolution for the donations at hand here. So we have three donations that have come in. We have listed them here. So we have the ship grant and the People's Energy Co-op that were presented Mr. Bester and Ms. Nelson. And then we also have a donation for the athletic football supplies by Mary and Justin Ram. All right. And again, a big thank you to all of our donors and supporting our kids. And with that, I would seek a motion for the acceptance of the donation. So, Ms. O'Neill? I have a motion by Ms. O'Neill.
I'll second. Sorry.
I have a second by Mr. Welch. Roll call vote. Mr. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorst?
Aye.
Aye for myself. That motion carries 6-0. All right. Next on the agenda is Consider and Approve the Resolution Establishing Combined Polling Places.
I can speak to this if you'd like. This is an annual piece that we need to do. Even though we may not be planning for an election, every December, the school board has to approve the polling places in the event that we would conduct an election. And so we combine our polling places during a school district election to the Stuartville Civic Center and Racine City Hall. So this is an annual task. It is no different than what we've done before. It just has to be completed by December 31st of each school year.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Emanuel. Awesome.
Second, Mr. Ravenhorst.
Mr. Ravenhorst? Okay. Any questions or discussion? Okay, then I will do roll call vote. Mr. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorst?
Aye.
Aye for myself. That motion carries 6-0. All right. Next on the agenda is the Truth in Taxation Presentation by Mr. Schroder.
Mr. Schroder, what would you like to do first? The PowerPoint or the payable 2020 versus 2020, 21, 2020?
Let's go through the PowerPoint.
Okay. And you tell me when you want me to scroll.
Okay. All right. So this is the annual public meeting that we have to hold for the Truth in Taxation portion. And so that's what we're gonna go through tonight. A little bit different than in previous years where typically we're onsite and then if you're here, you can ask questions or comment. Tonight, after the presentation, we will provide some time for that to take place. The email will be the form of asking questions if you are listening through the live piece. If you're a board member, ask questions whenever you want at this point. If you want to ask a question from the outside, it would be an email to All right. So you can go ahead and scroll through. So basically what we have to do is we have to have a public meeting between November 24th and December 30th. That's the after 6:00 p.m. It can be part of the regular scheduled meeting, which is what we're doing tonight versus having it be a separate meeting. We present the current year budget, which is the preliminary budget, which we would have set last springtime. And then we will look at the prior year actual revenues and expenditures, the proposed levy, including the percent increase. And then we'll discuss some of those specific areas, whether there are increases or decreases that are what I would consider to be substantial changes. As most of you know, the Minnesota Legislature sets the funding for Minnesota Public Schools. So this is just a snapshot of the the Minnesota Constitution that basically states that information in there that they need to make provisions, whether it be by taxation or otherwise, to secure an efficient system of providing public funds to the schools throughout the state. As a result of that Minnesota Constitution piece, the funding is highly regulated by the state. They set the formulas which determine the revenue, and most of this revenue, as we know, is based off of our per-people count. They also set the tax policy for local schools and the maximum authorized property tax levy. As well as the state can also authorize school board to submit referendums for operating capital needs to the voters for approval as needed. One of the challenges is the state sets the basic general education formula, and this is something that's some of this information is not new. It's something I present annually, just as a refresher so that we don't forget where we're sitting from a gen ed revenue standpoint. Since basically 2002, 2003, the general education revenue formula has not kept pace with inflation. So the legislature did approve it 2% for each of the last two years. And then this, the upcoming school year, the 2021, or the 2122 school year, we'll have to wait until the new legislative session takes place, which will set a new biennial amount for us. And we'll see what kind of an impact the COVID situation had on our state conference at that point. So the per-people allowance for fiscal year 2021 is $6,567. If that were to be adjusted for inflation, it would be an increase of another $639 per student. So that would equate to about a million and a half extra dollars that we would have if this were indexed based off of inflation. This is just a chart that kind of shows what I just talked about and how the gen ed formula lagged behind based on the current inflation situation over the last, I think that's the last 18 years or whatever. Another piece that funny that is not keeping pace is special ads. So in FY 2018, the cost of providing special education programs was underfunded by $822 million. An average of 40% or $5,705 per special education student. So that's where what ends up happening then is in order to fill that gap, we have to use our gen ed funding to do that. So that's been an ongoing issue for years. I thought we were potentially making some headway the last couple of years with the legislature as far as our cross subsidy goes. But then, of course, now we kind of hit the roadblock. So I'm not sure exactly where that will ever pick up speed again and get addressed. But it is something that is being looked at and has been looked at in the past, and it's still an ongoing issue. The Aga School Bond Credit. So that was something that was enacted in 2018. It has to do with our Fund VII debt service levies, everything except OPEB, which is the post-employment benefits. It's a reduction for farmers and timber owners. It was scheduled to scale to 70% and 2023. On the current levy that we're looking at tonight, the page 2021, it's at 55%. So it started at 40% and then over the course of the five years, it's to reach 70. So we have one more year of a 5% and then that final fifth year is a 10% increase from 60 to 70% at this time. The revenue for the Aga School comes from state income, sales and other taxes. So basically what it does is it it reduces the amount of levy that we put onto our taxpayers as far as our local levy, and it's covered by state at that point. So for us in 2021, it's about $280,000 that we don't put onto our levy. Some categories have been simplified when it comes to the referendum. The operating referendum, it's now all 100% approved, 100% voter approved, I should say. We do have the $300 operating referendum revenue that transferred into the local optional referendum beginning in page 20. So that total amount now is 724. There used to be two separate pieces. It used to be $424. And then there was a more approved option of a additional 300. That now is combined into one amount of 724, and it no longer needs to be approved. It's just an odd thing of the year that you can accept. So those changes did not have any tax impacts. It was basically the state taking over a portion of that and reducing your other referendum by that same amount. All right. Now we'll look at the current school year 2020 district budget. Some things that I just like to show every year for, that might be relatively new to this, is just to run through those funds that are impacted. The general fund is our main fund, Fund I. It's basically the revenues based on student enrollment. This is where we provide all of our instruction, instructional supplies, equipment needs, special education, transportation. All those types of things fall into Fund I. Food service is Fund II, and that would be where our school breakfast and lunch programs are housed. Community service is Fund IV. So that levy is based off of the adult population of the district, which is set basically for 10 years until they do a new census, which they did. I don't know when it'll ever come out, and we'll have a new number based off of that if that actually ever gets finalized or not. So at this point, that number stays the same. Early childhood levy, it's based on the number of children under five years of age within the district. And then we do provide some enrichment programs and early childhood family program, school readiness, which is the preschool, and then there can also be some adult basic end that takes place under community service. Fund VII is debt service. So that's based on the annual debt retirement schedules for the district's outstanding bonds, the annual levies for the payment of the The annual levies for the payment of the principal interest on the bonds is due. And the current debt is a result of the voter approved bond issues, and you can see the four that we currently have in place. One of those, the top two thousand and eight, eight, the eight point four six million dollar one, the last payment will be made in February of twenty twenty two. So that one's coming. Coming new here pretty quick, and that will be off the books. And then we go all the way until twenty twenty seven before the next one. One other one that will come off too is we have a I don't know what I want to call it, kind of an energy efficiency thing we did back in two thousand and seven for about one point one million. That one, we put on the, we did that one for fifteen years. So that one will also fall off in February twenty twenty two. That is housed in operating capital, which is in Fund One, but that will free up about a hundred and five thousand dollars a year in operating capital once that goes. Our budget revenue. So what we'll look at here is we'll look at where nineteen twenty actually ended up total within the funds. And what we're projecting for twenty twenty one. Now, keep in mind, twenty twenty one's budget was preliminary back in the spring, anticipating that COVID would not exist. By that time, by the time we started school in the fall, clearly none of that has taken place. So as we revise budgets, there will be some significant changes that that do take place on the revenue side as well as on the expense side. So as we look at these numbers, they are what they are right now, but they're going to change quite drastically in some areas. So our general fund, we're looking at a percent change there of about one point seven six. That twenty twenty one budget amount will likely go down simply based off of our projected enrollment. Food service. A million sixteen was the budget amount for revenue. Last year, we had it at one point one million. The benefit there was being part of the summer food service program for that last half or last quarter of the year. And this year, we're going to be on it the whole entire year. So the reimbursement from the federal level is higher when you're on that program than it is when you're just on the standard normal lunch program. So our revenue for food service should be back up higher than what I had originally budgeted for normal there. So our community service revenue, that one point two eight seven, will likely be less than that a little bit. As you know, when we go into the distance learning piece, we provide tier one at no charge. That does have an impact on tire time, which is the biggest piece of revenue within our community program. So there could be a reduction there in the amount of revenue that we were anticipating to generate out of that program that cost base for the entire year. Debt service. Last, last year, we had one point nine million. In twenty twenty one, we're looking at two point one million. So the increase there is last year, if you remember when you did the certify the levy, we had a big debt excess reduction of about three hundred thousand. That applied to twenty twenty one. So that's where that difference lies at this point. So overall, we're looking at a percent change in revenue, an increase of two point seven three percent. General fund revenue budgets. So here's where our revenue comes from. We are very reliant on the state to provide our funding at about eighty seven percent, and then our local taxes make up about nine percent. So very little in federal aid as well, under two percent in federal aid. Twenty twenty one budget overview for expenditures. Our general fund, we had twenty one point seven million in nineteen twenty, looking at twenty three million six hundred and sixteen thousand. So that number is going to reduce based on some of the costs that we don't have as we move through this COVID and distance learning type situation. So there will be some some reduced areas in there that will bring that budget more in line. I don't know that it'll be playing where it was last year. But it'll get, it'll definitely get reduced at this point. Food service, we had nine hundred and ninety thousand expenditures on projecting just over a million there. Those expenditures probably will stay close to that million dollar mark. Community service, just under one point three million, and then we're looking at one point three seven five million in the twenty twenty one budget. So that will, that budget, I'm assuming when we're in a situation where we can't charge fees, we'll have a way to expend those or charge those expenses off as well to some of the federal funding that we're giving for COVID relief. So there's some options there that could help provide some relief there, but overall, the program will probably take another hit. Debt service, two point one six six million. We're looking at two point one seven two for the twenty twenty one budget. So pretty much right on line with where it was in the prior year. Okay, next.
Oh, I was just curious on the staffing for tiger time, like if they're only watching, if they're only going to watch tier one right now with the way we're sitting for school? Or do we have less staff that's needed then?
No, no. So what happens is, well, number one, we have the, we're limited. The staff ratio is a lot less than what would be a normal situation. So we still have that piece. We also still have the tiger top program, which is the wraparound program for preschool. That's still going to be at normal. And then we do have some kids, I mean, I believe we have some that potentially are paying too.
Well.
No, they're all tier one, so tiger time is all tier one. Okay.
Like tiger talks, they would still be paying, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So just pay through six.
Yep, yep.
And in my report, I'll show you the numbers that are in the.
It's okay, like before eight or whatever.
Yeah, outside of school hours are paying, but during the school day, we're going to do increase the numbers down. Okay. And not getting funding for it. Thank you.
All right. So this is how our general fund dollars are spent. This is pretty typical every year. Not a lot changes here. The vast majority of our stuff is falls within the regular instruction, just over ten million dollars is spent on that, followed by your special ed, your site's buildings and equipment, and then your people support, which the majority of that would be your transportation costs. And then you get into your district support and your district administration costs after that point. What do our expenditures pay for? So our salaries, wages, and our benefits obviously are the biggest pieces of this at just about seventy five percent. So that's pretty typical. Most districts are mostly in that seventy five to eighty percent range for the salary benefit expenses. Components of our general fund balance. So at June thirtieth, twenty twenty, here's where we were sitting. Our on assign, our assign, the operating capital, the LTFM, safe schools. Scholarships are now part of Fund One. They used to be Fund Eight. Due to some accounting changes, those are now falling into Fund One. And then we had a little bit of a carryover in staff development last year as well. All right, the twenty twenty payable twenty one levy. So this is for the twenty one, twenty two school year. So collect the taxes now in May and October, and then that pays for the twenty one, twenty two school year, which is our fiscal year twenty twenty two. School district tax levy, that's either be set by state formula or voter approved. Those are the only two options. I've also got listed here some factors that impact tax changes. Some issues that are driven by the legislative decisions. So those types of things like the sales ratio, tax capacity rate structure, laws, mandating code compliance, those are all driven by the legislature. We have no say in how those are formulated. District voters are able to determine voter approved building bond issues and voter approved excess levy, operating referendums. Some other factors impacting tax changes. Some of the local factors would be your inflationary pressure on the real estate market, any tax abatements that might take place. Property improvements, changes in the assessed market value, which has been happening in one state county quite a bit the last few years. And then possible changes in your property classification, whether it be homestead, moving to a rental or something like that. This slide just kind of outlines the process that takes place in determining a property tax or what the property taxes will be on a specific parcel. So the city or the county assessor determines the estimated market value for each parcel. Then the legislature sets the formulas, then the county auditor calculates the tax capacity for each parcel property. And then the legislature sets the formulas which determine the school district's levy limits. Then M D E calculates those levy limits. The school board adopts the preliminary in September. And then does a final in December, and then the county auditor divides that final levy by your total tax capacity to determine what the school tax will be for that property. How were your twenty twenty one school taxes spent? So our general fund will make up fifty eight percent of it. Community ed will make up two percent, and our debt service will make up forty percent. All right. So your levy on the bottom there, your general fund levy, we'll see the prior year, the nineteen, page twenty, the proposed twenty twenty one, the dollar difference and the percent difference. So the general fund has an increase of two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy six thousand, seventy five cents, which is about eight point three eight percent. Community service has an increase of seven thousand, three twenty seven, forty six, a seven percent increase. And our debt service has a reduction of thirty thousand, nine hundred and ninety three dollars and fifty four cents. A percent difference of a negative one point five six. So our overall levy is increasing a hundred and ninety four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty seven cents or four point one four percent. Some of the major areas that had changes, your equity revenue had a decrease there of just under nine thousand dollars. So a number of these things, what happens is because we levy based on an estimate, especially with our pupil counts, adjustments are constantly happening for prior year stuff as those people counts are finalized. So you'll see some things that go up and down depending on just how accurate we were with the estimated people enrollment versus what the actual was. So operating capital, we have a just under five thousand dollar increase there. We had a negative adjustment on last year's prior levy. So that negative adjustment goes away. We're back to normal where we are on operating capital. We also gained one year of eight hundred billions on operating capital and LTSM. So that can impact the formula. Achievement integration, we have a ten thousand dollar increase there. We did have an increase in what they consider to be our protected students. So as that goes up, that's part of the formula for determining how much integration aid we get. So there's a little bit of an increase there in that number. Vocational. We have an estimated budget increase there. Also, there was a large adjustment on last year's levy that also was impacting that change in that area. LTFM. It's down twenty five thousand. So our alternative facility bond payment, the one that's going to drop off here shortly. Actually, the payment for this levy cycle is considerably less than it was in the prior year. So that's the biggest change of that piece. So then the lease levy, an increase there of a hundred and ninety eight thousand. That is the Z lease that is now replacing the old one of about forty five thousand. So in the end, that is basically the change in your levies is the Z lease coming on. If we didn't have that part coming on right now, your levy would have basically been maybe even a minor decrease on that piece. Okay. Some of the main variables that cause property tax increases and decreases, obviously changes in market values, changes in property tax credits, any type of referendum that are passed, and any increases or decreases caused by changes in the state funding portfolios. Also, the value of your property can increase or decrease, as well as your property taxes can be impacted based on other values of properties within the district changing as well. And this just shows a ten year levy history. Basically, if you look on the general fund, the tall blue one to the right, that is our current one that we're looking at tonight. The one prior to that had a pretty significant increase as well from the previous years. That would have been the operating referendum that was approved. So that would have been the first year that that came on, and then now you have this at least levy payment coming on to this year. And then community service is pretty flat, as you can tell. That doesn't really change. And then debt service, we, three years ago, so if you go from the right back in three, that would have been the big debt service reduction of three hundred thousand credit. Now we're back to more of a normal type situation with the debt service piece. So we have a total proposed school tax levy of four million, eight hundred and ninety five thousand, six hundred and one dollars and forty four cents. Questions, comments?
I have this up the table. Did you want to look at that?
You can pull that up if you'd like. So there's a lot of what was kind of covered in here. So this is just a a total breakdown of the levy compared to last year and all the different categories that make up the levy process.
Was this name right, is what you presented?
Pretty much. I just pull up some of the bigger things versus looking at every single one of those. Some some of them don't really change at all. Some do from year to year.
Then we have the, do you want to talk about the certification reports that they're going to go down?
So this is, this is basically just part of the resolution that you'll have to do. Has our total amount. Should that total amount on the bottom that has to be certified?
There it is.
Yep.
So that's the same number you have on the last slide. Okay.
Do we have any questions that came in here yet?
None.
Dan, over the, the proposed increases, what, one four percent? This coming here, is that?
Four point one percent.
Yes, four point one four percent.
I think that's the number of people who are here again.
Yep.
So you have the motion there. Any other question, discussion, or Mr. Schroder? Okay, Mr. Emanuel? Did you have any questions?
No.
All right, very good. Okay, so next agenda item is to consider and approve the twenty twenty payable twenty twenty one levy limitation and certification report. So I would seek a motion for the approval of the levy limitation and certification report that Dan had just gone over, Mr. Schroder had just gone over. So this one, I have a motion from Ms. O'Neil.
Second, Mr. Ravenhars.
I have a second by Mr. Ravenhars.
Can I ask one follow up question just to Dan?
Yep.
Can we, we get people who's been honest about this issue. Was it, would you reiterate, was it fair to say that the lease levy increase caused by the Z building project really is, was the driving force behind the increase this year in the four percent increase? I think you said it would have been flat without that. I just want to make sure I heard that clearly.
Yes, you are correct. So the Z lease. What's that?
Let's go start over now.
Start over.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So the Z lease is about a hundred and ninety eight thousand, and the actual difference within our levy is about a hundred and ninety four. So we would have had a very small negative if we would have not had the Z piece come on there. So it would have been virtually flat.
Okay. I just think it's, you could be able to tell people if you ask why you're leaning in the tax framework where. Okay, I just think it's, you could be able to tell people, you have why you're leaning in the text frame where it's moving forward.
Correct.
Alright. So I have a motion and I have a second. And thank you, Mr. Michael, for for validating that. And I will do a real call vote. Mr. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorse?
Aye.
Aye for myself. The motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mr. Shorter, for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And answering all of our questions. Alright, next on the agenda is board committee updates. So the first one is facility.
Has not met.
Okay, meet and confer?
We are having a calendar committee meeting on Wednesday afternoon and um we'll be taking a first glance at. A potential for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year calendar.
Um negotiations.
We have not received any invites yet to begin the process, but I expect those to be coming in in January, February.
Okay. Uh policy?
No.
Any other committees that have met?
Community had met on Tuesday. Um not a whole lot different than what we already know. It was basically since where they had, I think our last meeting prior to that was January. And Haley had been gone for a while. So basically she was just bringing the advisory committee up to speed with what's been going on and how the. Departments kind of fleece, you know, anyway. So pretty much we know what's going on. So there's really no new information for us.
Okay. Any other committees?
Infinity Online Governance Board met.
Yeah.
Last week. Uh Ms. Elpers joined in on that call, so thank you. And again, it was, it's pretty structured. I there. I can't say that I know a lot about the the organization. Um just being the two time meeting participant at this point. Um. But they they talked a lot of financials and how um their businesses, that is, it is essentially a business. Has changed a little bit because of COVID. And maybe Ms. Elpers would like to add some more.
Just making sure that they are um aligning their expenditures with their revenues, like every other school district in the state of Minnesota is doing. So. Containing costs as much as they can and making sure that they're financially solvent.
Okay. Um for the Z governing board, we have a board meeting on Thursday. Um we're starting to get the uh floor plans from the architectures and um. Starting the process moving forward. So once we get more information, um we'll be. I'll be handing out and keeping you guys up to date. But we are moving forward and. It's really good to see um the the support and the the resources. Um that these these kiddos get. So.
Seth also met, well, we've been meeting, but Belinda spoke at the last meeting and um. Got re-reviewed, so thank you for doing that. Um like again, with COVID, this year's different, you know, stuff that usually funds all the field trips. Grade grades case you five and it's just been different. So we're just encouraging. Teachers and staff to reach out if they want help funding any uh projects for their classrooms. To help make um this year, like what Patty Nelson did, the experience for the students. To continue so that we we have the funds. So they can go on a field trip, we're going to do something for them. For just lanyards for all alone and water bottles for all the students and then. Um yeah, we've still been fundraising, so we have the funds to receive this thing.
Alright. Alright, next on the agenda is the superintendent update.
So I just have a few things to share with you. Um. There we go. Uh supporting children and families, just want to make sure that the board is aware. Uh we're navigating our way through our distance learning model. We have counselors, social workers and principals making visits to homes of at this students and doing that personal outreach. Instead of depending on email or a text or a phone call. We have staff making daily phone calls to students and families to encourage them to engage in classes. So. What that looks like is there are staff members assigned to groups of kids that may not be typically engaging. And calling them before school starts and saying, just checking to see if you're up and out of bed. Building has a referral process to implement interventions for students who are having challenges. And we are bringing sixty five to seventy special needs students onto our campuses for in-person learning. Majority of them are not here all day, so they're doing a partial day, uh but at least getting the support from their special needs teacher. In that direct instruction. So um that has been going very well. That's been in place for one week. Um here's the tier one childcare that we have. Um we have a hundred and eight, uh seventy three students. That are here during the school day. Um as Mr. Shorter indicated, the staffing levels on this are very, very small, so. Um it's one to ten instead of the one to fifteen or one to eighteen that we normally do. So we need a lot more staff. So our cost of providing this care. Is going to be a significant expense without the revenue to support it. So this is an ongoing concern for the school district. Uh Tiger Todd has maintained its enrollment. We have thirty one of those students here at Central and thirteen at their cave. So in total, we have two hundred and seventeen students on campus for the tier one critical worker care and Tiger Todd enrollment. Meals that have been picked up at the school are two hundred and seventy one. Uh meals that have been delivered to homes and to bus stops is three hundred and twenty four. And we have fourteen families participating in the weekend food backpack, which are delivering with the bundle for being available to pick up. So uh we don't normally have that many students participating in the weekend food backpacks, but I think. Just through the sheer nature of our situation, we have more families engaging in that. For mental and emotional health, uh we are continuing with the Sunday lessons. Um all of our counselors and social workers are doing uh direct instruction in this area. Uh we are doing a lot of individual and family outreach and then we have friend book family services providing free consultations for families that are in need. And I've included all this information in our my uh family updates I brought everybody. So it's on the resource page for families. Uh in the event that they want to access that support. In the area of professional development, uh one thing that I communicated in last week's staff update. Is that once again, we're beginners working to become experts, even though this is a similar experience, things are not the same as last spring. We have unique problems this during this go around that require different solutions than what we did last year. Um really encouraging everyone to use the opportunities to learn from their mistakes, to be resilient. Engage in problem solving and work through the challenges to resolution. Uh during our P L C on December eleventh, uh the teachers worked together on student engagement strategies. Lots of collaboration and support, talking about what's working and what can be replicated and then any areas that needed solutions and ideas to do better and be better. In our principal P L C last week, we focused on educator well-being. And are now going to be participating in educator resilience blueprint. Uh the work is being done by Denise Moody through resilience impact. Every school in our school district got a free uh license to access the curriculum and this is for staff. Through the Bridges Collaborative. So um it's valued at about two thousand dollars for the four, uh five different buildings. It's about four hundred dollars a building. So. I'm very excited. I participated in the facilitator uh training today along with. Um principals and uh school counselors from our school district. And so um we'll be looking to uh collaborate on how we're going to roll this out. But the whole focus is on helping our educators be well and do well. And then our district leadership team this Thursday will be meeting and we're going to talk a little bit about resilient leadership. Um a lot of the work that I'm going to be sharing with them is from General W Casey Junior. He's a retired U S Army. Um this quote that I love is that there's two kinds of plans. Plans that might work and plans that won't work. And because we're all human, the best any leader can do is produce a plan that might work. Um many, many, many of our staff are focused on being perfect first time out of shoot. And in this pandemic situation, we can't be perfect. We have to do what we think is the best approach. And hope that it works. And if it doesn't, revamp, redesign and go back and do it again. So.
The eighty twenty plan.
The eighty twenty. So that is my update for this evening. And we can move on now to the next item.
Alright. The next item is to consider and approve January fourth, twenty twenty one. Uh at seven P M for our school board organizational meeting. So uh.
We would set the meeting first and then we'll do the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what we're looking to do is set the meeting for. January fourth, so it's not on our current schedule.
So you're seeing a question.
So.
Oh, I have a motion from Mr. Emanuel.
I'll second Ms. O'Neil.
I have a second from Ms. O'Neil. I'll do real call vote. So, Mr. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Michael?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. O'Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorse?
Aye.
Aye for myself. That motion carries six zero. Okay, so organizational meeting for January fourth at seven P M. So looking at. The tentative schedule, so in front of you.
I will also share this on my screen.
Perfect.
We, um what you have in front of you and at home. Is the tentative school board meeting dates. This is not for adoption tonight. This is for you to consider. And on uh January fourth, then we would look to approve our calendar for the two thousand twenty one. Year from January through December for a school board meeting on dates. What I did is I went off of this year's calendar and picked the corresponding dates that would be on next year's calendar. Things to note is that we have one meeting in May. That is something that we did this past year. Because May is extremely busy typically. And then we have one meeting in July. Because it's a pretty slow time of year. And then we have one meeting in December. And that is also our truth in taxation. So those are the three months in which we would have one meeting. All the other meetings as much as possible are on the second and fourth Mondays. In situations where there was a conflict I went with, you know, the first or third, wherever it would fall. Uh but again, the dates, the dates very much line up with what we had for this school year. For this twenty twenty meeting calendar is reflective in the twenty twenty one meeting calendar. So it's not for uh adoption tonight, it's for review. And then if there are changes, we want to make sure that we note those and adopt those on January fourth. Does anybody have any questions on how I landed there? Notes on the bottom, just say that the board meetings will be virtual during the codation, uh duration of the pandemic. Uh we are going to continue to cast on YouTube. And then uh we'll be in the boardroom unless we have to go to the cafeteria at Central. If the non-number of visitors exceeds comfortable seating capacity of the boardroom. Okay? That's that's. Um the next thing I have, and then we'll have Rebecca take over, is um a list of the school board committees. And just a description of what the committees are that we have. There are two types. We have board committees in which the board members represent the sole interest of the district for the purpose of doing board work. And then we have board liaison committees in which board members represent the district as a liaison between the school board and the committee. So the board committees, there are five. We have facilities, we need three members. We're likely going to begin having regular meetings in twenty twenty one as we need to dig into the UNESCO report. Begin planning for the prioritization of our needs. We likely would hold these on board meeting nights from five thirty till six forty five. Finance is three members. They meet twice a year. We hold those meetings on board meeting nights from five thirty till six forty five. Policy will need three members. We need to finish up our policy review. And those meetings are held on board meeting nights again at the same time. Negotiations, we will need three members. Uh we'll meet in twenty twenty one for the negotiation of the teacher contract. Meetings for this are scheduled based on the availability of members of both teams. And we can have anywhere up to fifteen meetings for negotiations.
Can we just do that?
We just been, yes. It's been, yes. We will begin again.
Okay.
And then the Z member, we need one with an alternate and by uh they're held in Byron on the second or third Thursday from six until seven, laws are if needed. And then the board liaison committees, health and safety, we need one member. Meetings are quarterly or four times a year during workday hours. Meet and confer, we need two. Uh we formally schedule four times a year, but they're only held if there's a need and that need is usually determined by the Circle United Educators. The Union of the Teachers. We usually hold them at four thirty or five o'clock. And we hold those meetings are are held to ninety minutes. We also, the meet and confer committee members are members of the calendar committee. Uh which beginning their work for uh next year's calendar this week. Seth, we have one meeting. It's held uh once a month at seven o'clock. We had, we have had two. I think this past year we just had Ryan, is that correct? Or did we have two?
There he was.
Oh, there's an alternate, okay. Um Minnesota State High School League is one member, meets twice a year. Infinite, Infinity Online Governance is one member, meets twice a year. And C members, one member. Called four times a year at Otana and those have all been virtual this year. So those are the committees and the descriptions. And I will pull up next to the third document. Which you have a copy of. And I also am ensuring this on the screen. This list, who was the number in two thousand twenty? And who would be members in twenty twenty one? We've filled that out on January fourth. And I think Rebecca's going to take over at this point.
So we're going to look at um discussing committees along with um officer roles for next year. So we'll segue into the committees, uh since Ms. Elpers just got done explaining the two different types. Um so taking a look at um what you're interested in for next year. Um and um I'm going to give you a timeline. Um what Ms. Elpers and I are going to do is take a look at what you guys are interested in and. Um what I'm trying to do is do a division of labor on how these committees are are divided up. And making sure that um everything is covered by the board members and making sure that. Um we've got. Uh everything taken care of. And maybe there are people that want to try different committees. Um so just taking a look at the historical data, making sure that everything is covered and. If there needs to be some switching, we can do that too. So the timeline, if you guys can take a look at these committees. Um send me what you're interested in by uh the twenty first, so next Monday. Um if I haven't heard from you by uh the end of the day on Monday. I mean, end of day. I say end of day, it's probably like nine P M. Um I'll reach out to you on Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh Ms. Elpers and I are going to meet over the Christmas break and hammer this out. So that we are ready to go for um for our January fourth meeting. So we really want you guys to have the committees that you want. So.
Somebody was being smart.
Yeah, so.
He has been emailed all these documents. And I would ask Mr. Ravenhorse that you would work with Mr. uh Romans to figure out what committees he may be interested in.
For sure.
Okay. Does that make sense, everyone? Okay.
I think my judges did the same thing. It's like we had a year off.
Okay, okay. Do you want to talk about offices?
Yeah, so um for offices, uh we have four, obviously. And um we have. Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um. Along with that, um, we have every year need to re-elect those officers, uh, in those positions. Um. So, one of the things that we want to do is going into the January fourth meeting is. Um, having thought about who wants to do those positions, so the chair, the vice chair, the treasurer and the clerk. Um. This is my first year as chair. Um. I got some real good. Uh, experience along with some, um. Uh, knowledge training, um, on the job training. Um, and, um, I would love to come back next year and be the chair again. Um. If you all would have me again. Um. So that's just me. Um, if there's anyone else interested in the chair position. Um. So we can, we can have a, a vote off on January fourth.
Can we talk about the process, um? That they need to find a nominator in a second, do you want to scroll through that piece?
Yep, so when deciding you want to hold an office, there is a process to go through, so. Um. You have to find another board member to nominate you. As that position and then also find another board member to, uh, second that nomination. And then we go ahead and vote as a board on January fourth. Does anyone have any questions?
So the task they need to complete then is to review the dates, proposed dates. And if they want to make any changes, that we have that ready for discussion on January fourth. And maybe if they do have changes, uh, Chair Wortman, that they reach out to you so that you're aware that that's coming, you know, for the fourth. And then they're also going to indicate to you by the twenty-first, the committees that they're interested in being assigned to.
Yes.
And then, um, if they want to, uh, hold an office, that they're going to find a nomination and a second for that nomination. And have that prepared for the new, correct, okay. And Mr. Ravenhorse will reach out to Mr. Romans to make sure that. He understands how all this comes together. Okay. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Romans, for hanging in there with us.
All right, I think that's all we've got.
Okay. And last on the agenda is adjournment.
So will Ms. O'Neill.
I have a motion by Ms. O'Neill.
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. Mr. Emanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Michael.
Aye.
Mr. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. O'Neill.
Aye.
Mr. Ravenhorse.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries six zero at eight thirty-one. Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Dean.
Thanks, Dean.
Signing off.
Good luck.
Have a great night.
Take care.